Good sign.
All right, and at this time, we're going to call to order the Pacoaston Planning Commission for Monday, July 9th, 2021. We do have three commissioners here today. We also have Commissioner Gribel, who is calling in remotely. So for those of us, or for those who are watching from home or are watching a replay, we have her on the phone. And at this time, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we are also going to have the invocation, which will be the Lord's Prayer.
I am praying. To the Lord of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, no nation, no doubt, and with liberty and justice for all.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. Amen.
Amen.
Next item on the agenda, we have some minutes for approval. The first set of minutes is for the work session from April 19th, 2021. And is there a motion to approve those as written?
I agree. I commit a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribel?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero.
Next set of minutes is for the regular session for April 19th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve those as written?
I take a motion to approve these minutes as well.
A second.
Thomas?
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribel?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero.
And lastly, there is a work session on June 21st. And do I have a motion to approve those minutes as written?
I'll make the motion to approve these minutes as written.
And I'll second.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribel?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Epstein.
Madam Chair, the motion fails on a vote of three to zero to one.
It would. All right, can, I did read through those, so I can, can we have a recount? And I can...
I have no issue with that.
Okay.
I think you can recall the vote.
All right. Because I did read through those minutes, and I did watch the replay on the city's YouTube channel, I will go ahead and repeat that vote. And we will go ahead and do that again. Do I have another motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
You have the motion that we approve the minutes of this meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribel?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero.
And at this time, we have an audience for visitors. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the planning commission for any items that are not part of the public hearings. And because I see none, no one in our audience today, we will close the audience for visitors. For public hearings today, we have four public hearings. The first one being a conditional use permit to allow Imagination Land Daycare to operate on the premises of Tabernacle United Methodist Church. And Thomas, do you have a presentation for this?
No, ma'am, I don't have a presentation. And you can see in the memo included in your packet that, and most of you are aware, that a fire consumed the Imagination Land Daycare building formerly located on West Creek Road on May 22nd. And they're asking for a conditional use permit to continue operations at Tabernacle United Methodist Church at 831 Pacoaston Avenue. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Any questions or concern? I guess my only question is, the conditional use permit needed because it would be a commercial entity within the church?
That is correct. Currently, there's not, it's not allowed in that zone, and that's the reason for the conditional permit.
Have the...
The only other question I have is, and I'm not opposed to this, is the conditional permit is open-ended.
Yes, sir.
And I can understand, but is there any recourse if, say, for instance, five years down the road, they haven't found or made any effort to find another place for their daycare center?
Yes, sir. City Council reserves the right to revoke and revisit any conditional use permit it passes at any time, so that's certainly would be their prerogative. But we as staff thought it would be appropriate to leave it open-ended, to afford them time to find a new location or remain at Tabernacle if the two decide to do that.
Right. I talked to one of the members, and they said they're very quiet, and it's very nice, so it's, there's not an issue from what I can understand with any of the people involved. I was just curious about the open-endedness of it.
Yes, sir.
So that, so there haven't been any, anybody come forward, any neighbors or anything that have objected, no letters of...
The only communications we've received was from one gentleman who is an adjacent property owner, and he said, he called me and was not opposed to them being there at all. He just made the point that he did have dogs and just wanted to make sure, you know, the kids were well-supervised, and I have no reason to believe they won't be.
One more question that I have. So for the conditional use permit, what conditions have been placed on the permit?
Well, you'll see that they have to continue to abide by the state and federal guidelines, you know, that they adhere to generally in any building. Other than that, they'll continue operations as they had at their old building.
So their hours of operation will be, what are their hours of operation?
I believe their former hours were somewhere in the nine to five range.
Because I was just curious as to what time they would, you know, and they're going to be in the, over, I guess, over in some of the Sunday School rooms?
I believe so.
Is what it said on the...
Any other questions or comments? And is there a motion to approve the conditional use permit as written?
I'll make the motion to approve the application for a conditional use permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribel?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero.
Okay, and the next item is the amendment to Article 1, General Provisions, Sections 1-3, Definitions. And is there anything that you guys would like to discuss with this?
Only to say that this is the same language that was presented at last planning commission meeting at the work session back on 21st. The only thing that I've really done with the definitions that's new since last time is that I refined the definition of alleys because our ordinance previously said a public travel way, but that's not really true because in Legacy, we approved alley as a private travel way. So it's just a travel way. Got rid of the word "public." And I defined the natural number. I refer to a natural number in 8.4, which we'll get to in a moment, and I defined a natural number because of that. Basically, it's a positive integer, such as 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and so forth, whole numbers. And that definition basically is taken, well, it could be from my son's algebra book that I helped him with last, last year, or Merriam-Webster in this case, but that's what we mean by that.
But Wally, on that first item on the public hearing, we, we discussed it, but we didn't have a, we didn't open the public hearing on that. Is it, or should we, should we have, do we need to handle that? Because we didn't open the public hearing.
I was gonna say, I think that the public hearing was open, closed.
I never opened the public hearing for that item.
Audience for the visitors, but not the public hearing. So what, should we open it?
But if you do that for the conditional use permit, that's what you're talking about. Good point.
Well, Angie picked up on it, I didn't, but I think we can handle that. We've, we've had it happen before. We've had that happen. We've had that happen.
Well, if it is okay with everyone, we can work on the discussion for item number two, public hearing number two, and then prior to having the public hearing for item number two, I will open up the public hearing for item number one.
Okay.
I would tell you to go ahead and do it before you do it. There's nobody here, so we know nobody's gone. I think I'd open it and get it over with and make a clean sweep.
All right, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing for the conditional use permit to allow Imagination Land Daycare to operate on the premises of Tabernacle United Methodist Church. And at this time, how we have no audience, no one's coming up to speak during this public hearing, I will close this public...
We knew we didn't have anybody, so it was so easy to skip.
I thought you did open it up for the...
I did for the audience for visitors. Yes.
Okay, yes, yes. Thank you.
All right, so we're...
Back to definitions, yes.
Yes, back to definitions.
As I said, these are the same definitions that were presented last month with just two additional items that I mentioned. I'm putting this in 1.3 because I would like these definitions to really apply to the entire ordinance and not just to Article 8.2 or Article 8.4. The idea being that as, as our ordinance matures and as we work on it, when we say landscaping, we want it to mean the same thing throughout the whole ordinance. And which, and again, I really listened to what the planning commission had to say several months back when they wanted to make sure that we were not prescribing requirements. And, and that was absolutely a correct comment. We shouldn't be prescribing requirements in here. We should just basically state what we're talking about. With that, and you'll notice that I kept the type in blue here, but in the resolution and, and all the references, I, I put in the blue type where I got the definition from, but I did not do that in the, in the overall resolution. Black. With all that said, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Does anybody have any items to discuss on this, or any concerns, or are you ready to make a motion?
I looked at it and compared it to the last time we did it, and pretty much I have the notes from the last time, and it's pretty much the same. I have no problems with it, that it is trying to just define, define what you mean when you put down a definition for, like, a shrub and so forth.
Exactly, exactly.
And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for this agenda item. This would be to, for the amendment to Article 1, General Provisions, Sections 1, 3, Definitions. And as I see no one, I will close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to accept it as written? You, you put a motion out, I can second it, I don't know.
No, you, you...
Is that okay? Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to accept this as written?
And I will go ahead and second that motion.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Gribel?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero.
And the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for amendment to Article 8.2, the Plan Development Districts Generally of the City Code. And is there anything you can discuss?
Just to point out that I had originally hoped to get rid of this and subsume it in 8.3 and 8.4, but I rapidly found out, and looking at this closely, that this really has what you might refer to as the legal machinery that's in place for approving a planned unit development, Planned Development District generally, just what it says. I'll go over briefly some of the things that I mentioned the last time. I just, in this first paragraph here, just I put includes, because it does, includes the PUDW, PUDW, PUDMU zoning districts. I talked at length about this last, last work session, where we talked about the waivers or the modifications, and I call the modifications, and they're pretty, they're pretty tough bars to meet. I mean, I wasn't here in 2015, so I don't know exactly what happened, but, but I do know the requirements are inconsistent. An applicant would have to show that the requirements that we have are inconsistent with planned development design principles. So that's one hurdle. The second is that the modification is consistent with the intent and purposes of the Planned Development District under the particular circumstance. Those are pretty high bars to meet. Like I said, I wasn't here in 2015, but I think anybody coming forward would, would have a tough time with that. And, and, and I know I'm sort of breaking things up here, but I thought it might be a good idea just to kind of take a look at this map that I've got here.
Hey, Wally, just one question. The difference between a waiver and a modification. I know pretty much what a waiver is, but is that really just the same thing as a modification? I mean, a...
Well, a waiver would be you get rid of the requirement entirely. A modification is you keep part of the requirement. I think an example would be, and it's maybe not the best example in Legacy, but when we did the modifications back about two years ago, which really gave rise to this, they, they actually didn't ask for a complete waiver of the buffer, they asked for a modification of the buffer, in one case, from 40 feet down to five feet in order to allow that stub-out road to go in, to protrude into the buffer. So that's what we're talking about with the modification. If we had waived it, we'd say, okay, you don't have to do anything there. So that's, that's the difference. So what we're saying here is instead of us doing a complete waiver, we want you to offer something in return. I thought I would go ahead and just look at this. I, I'm gonna use this a little bit later, but I just wanted to point out that a planned unit development MU overlay district is not very big. If you look at this map, Legacy is in this area, roughly speaking, in that area. And, and that area to the south, well, I think that's to the south, was added back in 2015 as part of a public hearing to increase the area of the PUDMU. But we're really not talking about a whole lot of area here. Basically, the area north of Victory Boulevard is undeveloped, and of course, there is some VC area, most of it, a lot of it anyway, owned by, owned by the Big Woods Development Company, with the exception of some EDA parcels, which is why they withdrew one of their, you'll remember perhaps that they withdrew one of their modification requests the last time they came through in that area. But I, I just do that to sort of point out that Legacy may just be the biggest thing we ever get, you know, geographically speaking, but now that doesn't preclude the fact that we could in the future expand the PUD area, but of course, that would have to go through a public hearing, so just wanted to make that point. I made it at the last meeting, but I just wanted to be complete. This next text at the bottom of this paragraph, I think is in spirit of what we were talking about last time. In areas where modifications, in accordance with this, in accordance with this article are granted and render landscaping as defined in this ordinance ineffective, fences or walls in accordance with Section 84-10 shall be utilized. That, that is in direct response to a planning commission comment time before last, I think, that, that talked about, the, the whole reason we went down this fence and wall sort of review is that the idea that you may have a fence or a wall in areas where trees are just not going to provide much of a buffer at all. So that's what an attempt, the attempt here is to say that, okay...
Hey, Wally?
Yes?
I'm having a hard time understanding you. Could you speak more into your microphone?
I will try to.
Thank you.
I will speak directly into the microphone, and we'll see how that works. Okay, I'm just pointing out that the last sentence under the, under the paragraph, under the, the two numbers that sort of set the bar, is that if the, if the landscaping is going to be ineffective, that's when we would look at walls and fences and that type of screening. Okay, the next paragraph, this is what a big question I've got for the planning commission. Right now, if we keep this next paragraph here, what it means is that people can come back after the original public hearing, after the original approval of the, of the master plan, they can come back and they can require additional modifications, much in the same way that Legacy did, legally, I might add, back in 2019, I think it was late 2019, November. The question I've got for the planning commission is if they want to keep this provision or not. Do you want to recommend as part of your notion that we keep this, or we recommend that it essentially be deleted? That's probably the biggest question I have of planning commission tonight.
What's the paragraph we're talking about? Is it the...
Okay, it's the, it's right where it says new paragraph needed here if the provision is to be kept.
Okay, that's what I was looking at.
Okay, that's it. If we keep that, after the original master plan is approved, the developer can come back and request additional modifications, again, much in the same way that Legacy did. The question is, do we want to keep the ability for a developer to do that, or do we want to say, okay, you've got one crack at it?
Oh, no.
You need to ask for everything upfront?
I, I don't, I don't agree with the upfront thing. I think it's going to be fluid depending upon things that happen.
Okay.
Sorry, Wally, are we talking about the 8.2-11?
8.2-2.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was confused, too.
It, it, it pretty much still has to come before, like you say, in the paragraph, the planning commission and the city council for approval. So if it is something that is a modification, that is something that we don't believe in or require, we still have that ability to deny that.
Correct.
All right.
Or in the case of planning commission recommending...
I don't think anything should be that solid when you're talking about development, and it's a plan. A plan is a plan, and...
Okay. Well, that's one person who thinks we ought to keep it? Is the planning commission pretty much of the mind that we need to do that?
I agree. I think we should.
Okay, well, then that will, we'll keep it.
And to reiterate that, it will come through the process of planning commission, city council...
Yes.
Public hearings.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, well, I will keep that, and that's in your resolution, so that's one less change we have to do to that.
And I was getting that, I'm sorry, Wally, I was getting that, the verbiage a little bit with the, the section 8.2-11 with the variations from the approved plans, where that says that it looks like that can go right to the zoning administrator...
Yes.
...who's authorized to grant. Are you gonna touch on that in a little bit?
Well, I was, I can touch on it, but I have not proposed any changes for that, because that does give them some variation ability on zoning administrator, but they have to put it in a written request, and, and we have to be able to look at it, you know, point by point.
So tell me about...
But we're talking about minor changes here.
Okay.
We're not talking about major changes.
So the variation, is there a definition of a variation versus a modification?
There is not a definition of a variation in the zoning ordinance. There is a definition of a variance, it's kind of a different thing, because that's regulated under a different set of state statutes. But again, I mean, if, if, if we look point by point, minor variations to yard requirements, maximum structure heights, and minimum lot sizes, you wouldn't expect to see more lots, or, or certainly more lots than what was approved. You might see less lots. That's happened a lot with Legacy. Legacy's lost a lot of lots along the way. And, and they've done a few changes to the master plan to reflect the fact that they're, they're gonna have less lots. Changes to the arrangement of buildings, provided that the major elements shown on the plan and their relationships remain the same. They've changed some of the arrangements to their townhomes, haven't changed the numbers. And, and in fact, when they wanted to do architectural changes, we said, no, that's not a minor variation, that is actually governed by what the city council and the planning commission recommended, so that's...
So talk into the microphone.
Okay, I'm trying to. But, but that, that's really what we mean by minor variations. We don't have a definition of variations anywhere. It's answering your question, no, we do not.
So again, Wally, Wally, I know, I know it's difficult, but when you're speaking to the other members, rather than directly into your microphone, I'm having a difficult time understanding you.
Okay, all right. The question that was raised by Ms. Emmett was, do we have a definition of variation in the zoning ordinance that covers the zoning administrator's latitude under 8.2-11? And the answer is, no, we don't.
And to me, that seems very subjective, when you have verbiage there, minor variations. And there's, there's some, some heavy hitters in here, minimum lot sizes, street design, phasing plans. Things to a phasing plan might not necessarily, and it doesn't have minor changes to that. I don't know if phasing plans can be changed minorly or not, but it does seem like there is a lot of subjectivity on this section, where there's a lot of latitude for the zoning administrator and not necessarily going through the process.
Well, there is some latitude. I will tell you that there's not a great deal of latitude by the simple fact of the matter that we've had Legacy come back for more modifications, you know, before the planning commission and the city council. I don't think that we've given any more power to the zoning administrator here than is provided for in state code. I mean, the zoning administrator is the appointed person that regulates the zoning ordinance. He could appoint a designated, I got rid of all that language, because I thought that was confusing. But, but I will tell you that, that this isn't an easy get. I, I mean, I know what you're saying, and I hear what you're saying, but it's, it's not an easy get for the applicant. And I, and I don't think it has through the process with Legacy.
I, I think in the subsection Z of the zoning administrator is authorized, and it pretty much details what you're allowed to approve versus not approve. much details what you're allowed to approve versus not approve.
Right.
And I know it's still kind of general, but it talks about the items that you're allowed to do, such as, you know, density and so forth.
Yeah. You cannot increase the approved density or intensity of development. You can't, you can't adversely affect the timing and phasing of development, of any development. That really came up, in a way, with that proffer amendment that they wanted to put past 146 building before they build the clubhouse and the pool. First of all, we realized very quickly that was not something that was within our purview to approve or disapprove, so they had to go through the public hearing process. And I think we kind of arrived at a compromise between 80 and 146, I think it was 120 or something like that. But we had, we had voiced our, our concerns with that particular provision. They cannot require a conditional use permit, and it's got to be in general accord with the purpose and intent of the approved application. You know, they presented a master plan the first time around, where they explicitly said in a proffer that they were going to build the clubhouse and the pool after the 80th, I think it was CO issued. So that was a major change, major change, which is why y'all got it. The buffers were all major changes, which is why y'all got that. The architectural renderings, major changes, perhaps the most major, in my humble opinion. But, but that's why y'all got, y'all got those. So we're not making major changes here. I guess that's what I would tell you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions before I open up the public hearing? All right, at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing for the amendment to Article 8.2, the planned development districts generally of the city code. Now, at this time, I don't see anyone coming for, to speak at the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing. Any other questions, concerns, or discussion about this? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the 8.2 amendment.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
It's Tom Stevens, and I made a recommendation to approve section 8.2 revisions.
And I second it.
Aye.
Commissioner Gribble?
Aye.
Commissioner Shriver?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero.
Just as a passing comment, sometimes, you know, we only meet once a month, and if some minor variations or stuff that comes up can't be handled by your office in a rather quick manner, then, you know, these minor ones, then I think that this is the right thing to do.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the amendment to Article 8.4, planned unit development mixed-use overlay district of the city code.
Okay, I'm going to try to be a good boy and speak directly into my microphone the entire time here. All right. I'm just going to kind of recap some things that I covered yesterday, because, last month, because I know not everybody was here last month, and highlight a few little tweaks that we made between last month and tonight. The first paragraph under 8.4-1, that last sentence is just to state exactly what we're talking about. These regulations are specific to the PUD MU overlay district and are also subject to all requirements and provision of Article 8.2, which we just talked about, which is the general. Where I say mixed-use proposal should, I changed that to a shall. I mean, it's a mixed-use development proposal, it should, it shall. To be a true mixed-use development proposal, it needs to promote a more efficient use of land, produce superior quality, produce a pedestrian-friendly environment, create a balanced mix of residential, non-residential, provide alternative housing choices and opportunities, and promote the assemblies of smaller parcels to enhance a unified development, which certainly happened with legacy, there were 27 smaller parcels that were sort of wrapped together. Permitted uses, haven't made a whole lot of changes, just under number four, under by right, I said private roads, driveways, parking spaces, and aisles, and I added alleys, because alleys are a part of PUD MU. Permitted uses, I added that parks, playgrounds, clubhouses and such are subject to Americans with Disability Act requirements, ADA requirements, a very important thing we have to pay attention to. In fact, I mentioned variances a little while ago. You can actually get a variance to increase handicap accessibility now. That was one of the changes in general assemblies. Anyway, just to illustrate that that's an important provision. Except for uses in structures, including home occupation in accord with 1-23, this is number nine, I'm sorry, and Article 14 of the city zoning ordinance, basically 1-7 addresses conditional use permits and doesn't have anything to do with home occupations or except for uses in structures, so we got rid of that. Permitted uses, under 8.4-3, haven't really done anything with that. The big thing that I've done is 8.4-5, and we covered this last time. I know that we'll kind of go slow. The first thing we want with open space is, it calls for currently, and I have not proposed change this, a 40-foot wide landscaped or naturally wooded buffer. Now, you'll remember, we had a lot of discussion about exactly what that was at the last meeting, and it turns out that because of a dearth of definitions, we basically couldn't say what landscaping was. It could be anything from grass to big tall trees, you know? So this is really to clarify that where an existing naturally wooded buffer exists pre-development, we want that kept. We don't want it torn down. Number B is where there are gaps of greater than 400 square feet, which is really 40 by 10, the depth is 40 and the width is 10. If you've got more of a, of a gap, or you just got a gap period, regardless of how many square feet it is. Landscaping plannings are calculated at the following rate for 400 square feet, with total numbers of trees as nearly approximate to total numbers of shrubs or vice versa possible. This is to avoid people saying, well, I'll just plant a bunch of shrubs. That's not what we're looking for here. We're looking at a combination, whether it's canopy or understory trees and shrubs, understanding that the math sometimes doesn't work out to a true 50/50. But, but, but generally, we're talking about one canopy tree, two understory trees, and three shrubs per 400 square feet. Now, a good point was brought up several planning commission meetings ago, is that what do we do when there's an overhead line or something that stops you from planting a canopy tree? Well, we would adjust the numbers of understory trees and our shrubs to account for that, square footage wise. Okay, I'm going to show a PowerPoint on how we calculate this in just a minute, and I've gone beyond the PowerPoint, I'll mention that, too. For areas not divisible by 400 square feet by a natural number, such as 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, whatever, the closest combination of canopy trees and/or understory trees and shrubs to a one-to-one relationship of square footage of planning space, think of that as 400 for now, the square feet used for plannings shall be required in areas to be utilized as landscape buffers. Let me read you the language, and I'll show you the picture. Where square feet used for plannings exceeds the square footage available by no more than 15 square feet, I've done the math on this, I'll get to that, shrubs less than six feet in height at maturity may be used to ensure survivability. One of the reasons we're doing this, this is based on a DEQ standard, one of the reasons we're doing this is that I've read many ordinances that have really ornate requirements for planning. They look great on paper, but how do they survive? If they're too crowded, they simply won't survive. So we're talking about adequate planning space. Where square feet used for plannings is less than square footage available by no more than 15 square feet, the remaining square feet shall be planted in grass or non-woody plants. Okay, so let me go to the PowerPoint, and I'll try to speak into the microphone there, too.
I completely lost you now.
Have you got me back now? Can you hear me now, Libby?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, I didn't see anything of any import on my way over here. Okay, so when we talk about this one-to-one relationship, if each canopy tree takes 130 square feet of planning space, and each understory tree takes 90 square feet of planning space, and each shrub takes 30 square feet of planning space, well, guess what? We come up to 140 square feet of planning space that's needed. We have a 400-square-foot area to plant, so we have the space that requires the plannings and the actual plannings themselves. That is a one-to-one relationship. Okay, now, if a canopy tree cannot be planted because of the overhead lines or what have you, we would allow one understory tree and one shrub as a substitution for that canopy tree, in this case, which would bring us to 390 square feet. The remaining 10 feet would be planted in flowers or grasses or, you know, non-woody plants or essentially flowers, that's what they are. Okay, now, this is not always going to work out, so I've taken some pretty simple things. I've done this all the way down to 10 square feet, I will tell you that. At no point are we ever 15 feet away from a match. But let's take 500 square feet, simple, simple. We can get to 490 if they plant the canopy tree, which you're welcome to do. Three understory trees and three shrubs would equal 490 square feet, close enough. Or if they decided they couldn't plant the canopy tree, or didn't want to plant the canopy tree because of, you know, impediments or whatever, we would have four shrubs at 360 square feet and five, I mean, four understory trees at 360 square feet, and five shrubs at 150 square feet, which gives us 510 square feet. In either of these scenarios, we cannot get to exactly 500 square feet, but we can get within 10 square feet. We can use either 490 or 510 square feet, depending on whether or not they're able to plant a canopy tree or not. If it's 490, the remainder is in grass or non-woody plannings, or if it's more, shrub size may be reduced to ensure survivability. Instead of saying it has to be six feet or more at maturity, maybe we say it, you know, has to be three feet tall. You know, it could be a different type of shrub, all the way down to verbenum, which is like 18 inches high. But that would all be looked at as part of our review of any, of any plan that came through. Not to belabor the point, but I went ahead and did 600 square feet. You know, if we did one canopy tree, four understory trees, and four shrubs, and I know it's, Libby, this is basically exactly what we covered last time. 600 square feet, or we can actually get to 600 square feet if they can't plant, plant the canopy tree. You could have 500 understory trees and five shrubs, 600 square feet, which is actually one-to-one relationship, because we've got 600 square feet to cover, and our plannings happen to take up all of the 600 square feet. Okay. But again, if they choose this canopy tree option, we can't deny them of that either. So we can get close, or we can get exact, so it depends, a little bit of flexibility there, in keeping with the PUD theme. I'm going to go a little faster now, but 700 square feet, we can get 700 square feet with a canopy tree, we can't without it, but we have allowances that they don't have to plant a canopy tree where it's not allowed. So this is just saying that we can get to 690 feet of planning, square feet of planning space, or 700 square feet of planning space within that 700 square feet. 750, a little bit different, kind of the same situation, though. We can get there exactly if they don't plant a canopy tree, but canopy tree is part of the requirement. If they want to plant a canopy tree, they certainly can, if they're able to. And so we can get within 10 square feet, or we can get exactly there. And as I said, rather than go through, I mean, there's literally innumerable scenarios that you could dream up on this thing, but what I did is I actually went into a program, and I did down to 10 square feet. In no case are we ever going to be more than 15 feet off of this relationship, regardless of what number we use. I mean, think of it this way, a shrub is 30 square feet, you divide that, that's 15 feet, square feet. So I mean, you can't be more than 15 feet off, it just, just won't work. So anyway, that is sort of the pictorial or the breakdown of how we will figure what they need to plant. And again, for anything under 400 square feet, sorry, Libby, anything under 400 square feet, a gap, we will not require anything. Now, I know a lot of y'all already had debate on my explanation of that, and I apologize, but I wanted to make sure that, that we went over it again. Credits for open space, number two here, can be given for enhanced landscaping or other amenities as deemed appropriate. Enhanced landscaping is nothing more, if you look at the definitions, than landscaping that exceeds the zoning ordinance requirements. We decided to keep it open-ended like that, rather than trying to say what it was or wasn't, which I think was wise. I just got rid of the in addition under number three here, and I wanted to make clear that the developer had to apply for it. Now, this, this sort of, this number three here, Libby, I'm under 8.4-5 under number three here. The planning, the city council can waive landscape requirements where it abuts an adjoining PUD MU district. So if the planning commission does that, or the city council does that more precisely, then basically what we have under 1A and 1B sort of becomes invalidated. But let me show you an example of where that will work and where that won't work. Okay, if you're looking at this map, and I'm sorry, Libby, that it may not be available to you, I hope it is, but if this is the whole PUD MU district plus the part that we added to the south.
I'm sorry, the video is delayed, so for a while there, you were still at your seat, just to let you know.
Oh, okay, I'm on a delay here. Okay.
There you go.
All right. Basically, this whole area that I'm pointing out with the red right here, plus the part at the bottom that was rezoned to PUD MU back in 2015, basically, that's all the PUD area. So legacy has a 40-foot buffer running down Oxford Run. They could have asked city council for a waiver of that. They could have asked city council for a waiver of that, because they adjoined other land that was in the PUD MU overlay district. That's really what that means, and I have not proposed taking that right away from them, because, well, I feel like you have to be realistic about what, you know, what you can and can't do in an ordinance. I will say that Legacy, which we've already sort of pointed out, Legacy, Legacy is all grandfathered. So essentially, these regulations are not going to affect Legacy, but they will affect any new PUD MU development that we get, realizing that probably the lion's share that's taken up by Legacy now, but, so. But the point I'm trying to make is that that's another reason we call them modifications, because they didn't really ask for an outright waiver, but they did ask for modification in really one area specifically, and that's where the road was protruding into the 40-foot So, that's the meaning of that ability of city council to waive it. Now, you'll notice they can only waive it completely where they are surrounded by other parcels in the PUD MU overlay district. There's some other language in there that talks about if they're not adjoined by that district, they cannot get a waiver unless it's developed for commercial uses, I believe I'm right about this, in which case they can have it reduced to 20 feet possibility. But again, that would be handled, that's something that would be handled. I think that would be really hard to come back and waive later. I think you pretty much have to do that from the get-go. But again, I did not propose getting rid of that language. Talk about this all night, I guess, but number four there, same kind of language as I had in 8.2, where we talked about using fencing and walls where landscaping is not effective. And then, we put uses permitted in open space. We really want open space to be, the 40-foot buffer area, we would like for that to be left alone. So, really, we're talking about getting rid of any stormwater management facilities within that 40-foot buffer. Public utilities and maintenance easements beyond what is minimally necessary, we understand that you're going to have to have power to a development, and you can't get power without cross-easement somewhere, but we want you to stay perpendicular as much as possible and not meander the easement throughout the buffer. In other words, not, you know, not staying in the buffer longer than you absolutely have to. Oh, let me see here. Okay, we've got another, under 8.4-6C, we've got another Americans with Disability Act And also, under 8.4-8, general provisions. You know, city council pretty much sets what the setbacks are as part of a master plan. If they should not do that, for whatever reason, we've added language, "In the absence of city council action, setbacks shall be 10 foot for side yards and 20 foot for rear yards." And that's basically taken from what we require of townhomes in the R3 district. City council can make it five feet, you know, if they want to, of course, you know, building code wants you to be at least 10 feet apart. But if they don't take any action, that's what the setback's going to be.
And what was that previously, before the change?
Everything, building separates for residential structures, everything except what's in blue. Currently, it reads, "Within a PUD MU district, city council shall establish minimum building separation standards at time of master plan approval." So, they're free to do that, but if they don't do that, for whatever reason, these are just like fallback setbacks. And I corrected the typo under 8.4-8B, where it refers to 13.2, it's actually 8.2 on the zoning ordinance. Okay, we're almost done, guys. Okay, under two, under 8.4, dash, I'm losing my place, 8.4-8, number four, we just added paved surfaces in there. We really don't want parking areas within the 40-foot naturally preserved buffer, which they could be. And we get down to 8.4-10, fence and wall requirements. No wall or fences located adjacent to public right-of-way easements or stormwater management facilities, both public and private, serving the PUD MU district, shall be constructed unless the zoning administrator has reviewed and approved the permit. We moved the sentence, "The zoning administrator shall review and approve all requests," because I think the idea was that you weren't supposed to do any of this until the zoning administrator got the request and approved it. But that's not really what it says, it's very confusing language, so it was just an attempt to try to make that make more sense. In general, fences or walls should measure no more than four feet in height and shall consist of a masonry vinyl of wrought iron material. If we're going to use these as buffers, they can be up to six feet in height. Again, the zoning administrator would have to approve that. And last, but certainly not least, is 8.4-11, the minimal architecture design. We need, at the very least, windows, balconies, bay windows, and articulated massing. And what articulated massing is, something other than just a straight front on the road. We want some definition in there. Other architectural elements, of course, can be included, we're not precluding that, but we're saying at the very least, we need these four things. And I'm not exactly sure what we approved back two years ago has much articulated massing, but anyway, it was an attempt to try to address that in the future.
And for clarification, does that mean at the very least, each of these four items, or?
Each of those four items, yes. At the very least, and, you know, I could add, you know, windows and balconies and bay windows and, you know, I could certainly do that. And that is my explanation for 8.4. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Questions before we open up the public hearing?
No.
Okay.
Beat it to death.
And then, to add this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing for amendment to Article 8.4, Plan Unit Development, Mixed Use Overlay District of the City Code. Now, at this time, since I don't see anyone in the audience, we will close that public And while you did mention it, and I would like to see just clarification on that minimum architectural design, just any verbiage stating each not four. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not a problem.
Any other comments? Or a motion to, is there a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion to the resolution recommending approval to amend the city code of ordinance by modifying Article 7.4, is that 7.4, or are we talking?
8.4.
Well, it says 7.4 here, VII, in the resolution.
That's a misprint. Should be 8.4.
Okay, 8.4, Plan Unit Development, Mixed Use Overlay District of the City Code, and in accordance with what you just said also about saying the word "all" or?
And, I think if we put the word?
And, okay.
Do I hear, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Commissioner Graeble?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero.
Now, the next item of business on the agenda is the election of officers. I know we only have three of us in person, one over the phone. If it would be okay with everyone, I would make a motion to postpone the election of officers until the next meeting.
We usually do. Okay. I don't have a problem with it.
No, I have no problem at all.
Been here before.
And I don't know if that required a motion, I made a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we postpone the election of officers for the planning commission until the next plan meeting, which is in August.
Second thought?
Commissioner Schreiber?
Aye.
Commissioner Graeble?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Chairwoman Emmett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the motion carries by a vote of four to zero.
And lastly, we have communications and correspondence. Molly or Thomas, do you have anything that you would like to address or any upcoming
Nothing really springs to mind. We are constantly going out to Legacy and doing our SWIP inspections and making sure that they're supposed to be, they're doing what they're supposed to.
Can you speak closer to the phone? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, we're doing inspections out at Legacy and we're making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do as far as the ENS. We are expecting any day now, the BLA boundary line consolidation plat, that's basically going to put all those properties together. They're going to probably, well, not probably, what they're going to do is Phase 1, we've approved, and they owe a significant amount of bonding and they're working with that in their subdivision agreement now. They're going to do 2 and 3, which we're also awaiting for that, and that's the area in the back. And then, the apartment buildings and the commercial properties will be separate, in separate phases also. I don't think that's anything we didn't already know, but they're going to show that on their BLA plat, boundary line adjustment plat. So, you know, things are moving forward with that. I wish I could say the same for every development that we have in town. CVS is moving forward, I'll say that, they're moving forward. But those are really the two big things we've got going on right now.
Have you heard of any interest in the Farm Fresh property?
I have not heard anything definitive, no, I have not. It would be nice to hear something, wouldn't it?
Yep.
It'd be very nice, because it's a lot of empty space, that's for sure.
I think the only thing that I would tell the board, just kind of segueing into next month, is that you'll have another conditional use permit, very, in my opinion, an easy one, similar to tonight, and of course, your election of officers. And I know that we as staff are looking forward to continue working on some code changes and amendments.
Absolutely. Which actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, Thomas, because I was thinking about 8.3, the PUDW, which currently, we don't really have any space for, but since we've sort of approved, you know, 8.4, we kind of know the template. So, I guess what I'm asking the planning commission is, would y'all have a big issue with me bringing that forward next month? Okay. Libby?
Yes?
Were you able to hear me, or do I need to speak clear?
Fairly well, I mean, there's a lot of muscling. If you're not speaking directly into the microphones, it's a little more difficult to hear over the phone.
Yeah, I keep a slouching off on that, I apologize. But anyway, we'll bring PUDW before you next month.
Okay.